Okay colleagues. Let's start with the first piece of legislation. It's calling for a public hearing. Calling for a public hearing on Skyler Street, 932, 934 Skyler Street. This legislation is sponsored by Councilman Burnmaster. Councilman Burnmaster, are you okay with the public hearing, sir? The next piece of legislation is for the sale and that will go to committee. Our next piece of legislation is for the sale of 105 and 100, oh I'm sorry, 1,005, 1,009 Park Ave. This is sponsored by Councilwoman Katie Aiello. Ms. Katie Aiello, how are you, you okay with this piece of legislation?
Yes, I was.
And the following legislation is for the sale of property that will also go into committee. Our next piece of legislation is Resolution Number Five, sponsored by Councilman Irving, 1201 Seymour Ave. Are you okay with calling for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, sir. The following piece of legislation will be also going into committee for the sale of that property. Next piece is Resolution Number Seven, calling for a public hearing for 1525 West Street, also in Councilman Irving's district. Sir, would it be okay to call for a public hearing on it?
Yeah.
Okay. The following legislation, of course, is the sale, Number Eight, that will be referred to committee. Next piece of legislation is Resolution Number Nine, sponsored by Councilman Burnmaster, 1112 Stark Street. Councilman Burnmaster, are you okay with calling for the public hearing? Okay. The following legislation will also be filed to a committee, Number Ten. Next piece of legislation sponsored by Councilwoman Katie Aiello for 623 South Street, calling for a public hearing.
Yes, I was up with that.
Okay. The following legislation, Number Twelve, would be referred to committee.
Councilwoman, may I have the floor for one second?
Sure.
So, usually we sell properties in the Urban Renewal Agency for very little monetary amount. But I've seen so far, $31,000, $31,000, $57,000. The only thing that I'll ask from those members on the Urban Renewal Agency, and Brian Thomas as well, is can we get an update on the, I guess, fund balance for the Urban Renewal Agency to kind of see where they're at in monetary dollars at the next meeting?
That would be our budget director's purview?
We can make that happen. Just so you know, one night a street that just came down, we took it down hot, and that's coming out of URA. So, I will also project what the other demolitions that were coming through URA, so I can do that.
Yeah, just to kind of see where, what we're doing with the money. That would be, I would appreciate that. All right, thank you.
All set, Sam?
Yep.
Our next piece is ordinance Number Thirteen. It's rescinding and annailing Section 214, 134 subdivision F, which calls for the 90-day application period. Of course, we're working the best way we can to find out different ways to put constraints on corner stores. And this is one constraint that we can put into action. Any questions?
So, what's the, what's the?
2,000, it's a 2,000-foot radius.
The 2,000-foot radius is fine, this is for use variance, Sam.
Oh, okay.
If you look at your section, it's, we gave you a copy of it.
Where is it?
It's 214, I put it on your desk.
Oh, that's the one you just sent me.
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes, okay, I see that, yeah.
There's a 90-day grace period between, remember if, remember if you recall, Marcus says that it jumps from one owner to the other, and you still have the use variance. Of course, this will stop it, they would have to go back to the ZBA.
Yep, appreciate that, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, all set? All right. Next piece of legislation is ordinance Number Fourteen. It's a budget transfer. We have our budget director here, would you be so kind to give us a quick summary?
Sure, I, I got a memo on Monday, did everybody have a chance to read it? So, the really great news is that we've been doing an awful lot of work the past three years, and most of, if not everything, held in the storm that we had last week. And so, we're very excited, and we've got Stephanie who's out there every day working on this stuff, and she is just tracking down everything that she can. So, as I mentioned in my memo, we had an extra $56,000 left at the end of March 31st, 2022, that just rolled into our regular fund down, we couldn't hide it over. But we're asking of the $250,000 that was set aside by the council last year, we'd like to take half of that and bring that in so that we can continue on with some of our cleaning and our maintaining.
Storm.
Restore.
Stormwater.
We can only use restore.
I just want to quickly, Councilwoman Aiello, if you don't mind if you have the floor. Two things, we had a flood mitigation task force meeting today, and members of the county and their, their planning department had nothing but wonderful things to say about Stephanie and the work that she does. So, I want to give her, you know, a little bit of credit for the work that she's done as far as this. With that said, we're trying to focus certain areas of the city as far as flood mitigation and what, what we can do. And I hope that maybe in the near future, if we do come up with some of the plans that we have, that once we prioritize what, what the, you know, necessity is and, you know, kind of what the board gives those suggestions on, hopefully we have some money to apply for some grants and so on and so forth. So, I would still like to see maybe a flood mitigation fund balance, if possible, you know, fund for that, moving on in the near future, because I think, you know, what we're trying to do, you know, has a lot to do with funding, you know, just kind of trying to start the projects. So, I don't know if you want to touch base on that too, please?
Yeah, so, the last point first. Our audit isn't complete, we just started our audit, but we do have some preliminary numbers, so I may be coming back in very near future and asking you to consider restricting to additional fund downs. So, that's the really good news. Number two, we did recently just apply for a grant from New York State for the Southern Park Drive area. There's some road issues that we have up there, and I know that we're being considered, as we heard from them, so we're excited about that, but we should know in a couple of weeks if we receive that. So, we're actively looking for grants to apply for. And number three, something I know, Councilwoman, that you really encourage us to do, we've, as noted by memo, we've worked with the town of Deerfield to deal with some of the problems up, up in North Utica. The highway superintendent has just been fantastic to work with, and Stephanie found a way for them to help us without having to come up with any cash, because they didn't want to come up with any money. We came up with the money, they came up with the manpower, and fantastic. I don't know if the Councilwoman mentioned at your meeting, we are actively working with the town of Hartford, some of the South Utica problems. And.
Yep, and, and Stephanie, they did mention that they applied for a grant. Stephanie Wors put together the grant for flood mitigation in North Utica, so that was, that's wonderful. And I know she's one person, and she's definitely stressed herself then on, on, on working very hard to try and mitigate a lot of the issues.
So, she's actually going to be helping the town of Hartford. She's going to be going door-to-door in Hartford, where there's a particular area of Offickly Road, where there's a detention basin that's incredibly old land, that the town is willing to go and clean out. The town needs a little bit of help, they don't have enough time, and she's going to be going door-to-door to get these messes. And so, what a great, what a great teamwork that we think that will really affect down by Arlington. We still are going to have the problems with the hall, the ravine, and the cemetery, but our team's been actively working on this issue.
Very much appreciated, I'm sure.
She's doing a great job of unbeaten, which I should know that.
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt.
Ever.
Yeah. Yeah, she's done great, where, I mean, like I said, I mean, from not only just the city of Utica, but the outside areas, she's been complimented very well, so.
And she speaks with constituents when she's out there. Yeah, she's not afraid to go to the back of the doors.
Sam, you off that? All set, Sam?
She's just going to come after your job, Mike, I know.
That's fine, I see you have it.
I love you, Mike, you know that.
Joe Beech, Councilman Beech, are you on the floor?
Yes. Heather, I read, I just want to go over a couple of numbers here. So, in the budget, we had $400,000 on top of this money that we put into this.
I thought it was 250.
It was 250.
No, we put 250 in ours, but in the original budget, you had, there was money in, there was.
There was 250.
Okay, and I read your email that you spent that 250, that's what we, I talked to you about. So, that's why we're going into this.
Yes.
Okay, so, getting back to what Councilwoman Colosimo says, we already have, don't we have this extra fund where we put this money in, can't we put the money she's talking about into this fund?
We could, and I, as I mentioned, as I mentioned, I may be visiting with you again in the near future about restricting additional fund balance, you know, once we have a core of concrete numbers. So, remember, there's two different pots of 250. One's in the general fund operating account, which we've expended.
You used, okay.
We expended, and this other 250 you guys put away. So, we're looking to take 125 of that and.
Okay, I have no problem with that, but if you remember, if we go back to this, when I originally started, we had, we did the capital project, there was money there, and we went back and we asked to put 500,000 in, the mayor came back and said 250. And we were told also that once we were going, there would be money to put, add the other 200 or 250 into it, whatever happened to that?
Don't, can I, can I head on that a little bit? So, I think, I think, and, and it's kind of coming all together at this, at our flood mitigation meetings. They are, they, there are several projects going on in the city, North Utica being one, where they applied for the grant. They've got, what is it, the, the Blue, Blue Creek, there's.
Starch Vale.
Yeah, there's Stars, yes, so, I mean, there's Nail Creek, there is Reels Creek. I've got the list, I mean, there's a number of projects that they've been working on that they have, they had utilized some of those funds towards. The problem is, is that putting that money in that account until you know what you have to do with those projects, I think is kind of what the stalemate is on those, especially with Nail Creek and, and a lot of that. So, I can kind of understand, you know, they've done the work already in North Utica and some of these areas, until they get the study done to figure out what they have to do with these projects, there's no use for that money right now. And that's.
But I'm, I'm not questioning any of that. What I'm questioning is, the reason we started this is there was a surplus. And we decided to put this money in. We asked for 500,000, it was there, because the original meeting, there was different things, and we cut back. Mayor came back and said 250, and you told us that after the new budget comes, we're going to do 250 now, there's probably going to be money to add extra money. Obviously, you must have did more projects than you were going to do, and there is no money. So, I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
When we were constantly doing stuff on stormwater, nothing is taking.
Right, right, which is good.
Which we should.
But I just want to go back to what we said. We asked for that stuff, and I just.
Remind you that all it takes is one major rainstorm, and we're back to square one.
Okay, so, and that money, a good thing we put that money away then. We had money for a rainy day then, right? Okay.
No pun intended.
All that, all that, all that, we just circled, circled the bandwagon.
Councilmembers, your, all questions answered? Okay, let's go to our next piece of legislation. This is sponsored, ordinance Number Fifteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Burnmaster, handicap parking sign in front of 1572 Baxter Ave. Councilman Burnmaster here, good with this? Okay, sir. Our next piece of legislation is Resolution Number Sixteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Friend and Councilwoman Katie Aiello. Resolution supporting workers at CSEA Local 1000 and the Utica Zoo. Who would like to speak on this legislation?
Sure, I don't mind. Yeah, the Utica Zoo workers, I talked with them about one to two weeks ago, and they're just looking to unionize as far, and they're just looking for the support, actually, of even the zoo, so that's kind of where they approached us, and want to keep that conversation open. They love what they do and want the security and peace of mind to keep doing it here in Utica. And then, from my standpoint, I was very receptive of it, because I think as we look to grow Utica and retain young, young people, that comes with secure jobs, living wages, especially we want well-educated people, and if we want to support people like that to grow the roots here, I thought this was the way, so.
Anything addition? Any questions with this legislation?
I, I guess, I have a couple. In regards to this, I mean, why did, why is a resolution needed, I guess, for them to become unionized? Like, you, I mean, my biggest thing is, is like, usually there's, you know, monetary amounts that go along with the union, unionization, so on and so forth, like, where did this come from? From the workers' name, like, I mean, if there's workers that could come in and explain to us, like, what was the reasoning behind this, where did they come from? Why is nobody here to speak on behalf of it, I guess, my, my biggest issue? And especially Andrea Heath, I know that the zoo has, you know, sometimes financial responsibilities that they have to put towards the zoo, like, what is, what is the be-all to this, I guess, so to speak?
So, zoo work, I believe that some of the union people will be here and will use public comment, so, as far as I know, so we will hear from them, so that's a good question. I think that, so that was the second part of your question, what was the first part?
Like, what, what, is there going to be a financial impact to the zoo? I mean, here's, here's my biggest thing, we have.
So, I know, I know what I was going to say.
Unions inside the city that.
Right.
I mean, still are out of contract, and we're, we're not supporting them. And I, I believe that wholeheartedly, as an entire board. So, I think, I guess.
We have.
Let's put our responsibilities first, too.
Right, so I would say two things, we, this is not unprecedented, that the council would pass a resolution in support of a union. The last one we did was in support of 1199, when they were in contract negotiations with the Masonic Care Community. So, we passed a resolution then, so that, I don't remember exactly what year that was, sometime between '20 and '21. The idea here is to encourage, I, I think it would be best if they could come to a mutual agreement, if the administration and the union could come to an agreement to voluntarily enter into this. If not, then the union will go to a vote, and I actually think it's better for the city if the, if the zoo administration enters into a voluntary agreement, and that's what this resolution is, is expressing.
And, and I appreciate that, and I, and I would hope that maybe next council meeting, if we do that, maybe we can do something in support of the fire department that's been out of contract for, for two years. You know, as, as a city representative, I mean, we kind of got to look at those guys, too, and kind of wonder, you know, here we are supporting the zoo, which I have no problem, and obviously I'll support that 110%, they're, they're union workers, but I think that we have to look in our own backyard, too, because I think it's a little hypocritical for us as a body to support one union, when the people that we represent are still without a contract, living in the conditions that they are. And I just, I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there. So, I appreciate this, and I'll support it 110%, but maybe that's something next, maybe next meeting we got to look at, too.
Any other questions on this legislation?
Is anybody okay with full council on this, or? I, I'm all for it.
I would love that. Katie, but I would love if we had full council.
Any questions with that?
No, no problem.
Clerk?
If not, you can put my name on it.
Please.
Full council.
Please make it sponsored by full council.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, our last piece, I think, would be the local law. This is sponsored by Katie Aiello and Councilwoman Friend. We have a local law that simply encourages a council member the right to speak at a plane board or a scenic and historic meeting. Let's open for discussion, any questions on this?
Of course, because I always have something to say. I, I, I have no problem supporting this, this, this local law. There are some things that I, that I'm going to reserve myself on, and maybe as a body, we can come together and kind of adjust it, okay? In, in particular, I don't mind as a councilperson when I have the chance to speak on behalf of my constituency. The only thing is, and I, I reserve myself on this particular piece, which I have, if we come to an agreement, this is something that we're all going to agree on and support, is allowing the actual people that live in that neighborhood to speak on that as well. I think that that's something that maybe we could possibly come to an agreement on, maybe 30 minutes, you know what I mean, to allow at each of those forms, maybe not just councilpeople, and, and that's just kind of the only, the only issue that I had with this particular piece.
Can I break in there?
Sure.
If we, as a body, decided that we wanted to make every planning board and every scenic and historic into a public hearing, I, count me, count me in. That's all, that's what it would take?
And, and that's the, that's the only thing that I, that I would say, because sometimes us speaking on behalf of, of a resident or somebody that lives in that neighborhood might not get, you know, taken, take what we have and might not get what they want to, wholeheartedly. But as a public body, we have to allow people the right to speak, and we went through this as a council, where we, we used to have public commenting period, then privilege of the floor, and there was, you know, a lot of different things that went on in this body that I've seen, you know, changed throughout the years, but it, it has worked for us, and allowing the public to speak on behalf of, you know, an issue that's going on in their neighborhood, I don't, I don't see that much of an issue with allowing a 30-minute public commenting period.
I completely, wholeheartedly agree. And in fact, the reason why ZBA is not in here is because they are, by definition, public hearings, so that everybody already has that right. But, you know, I don't know if you want to amend this to add that, or if, can we pass this and then let's work on that next?
I, I kind of don't feel comfortable just allowing only the public body to speak at a meeting. If, and I think.
The public person, the representative, yeah.
As a, as an elected official, and that would be my only thing, was to maybe have. And that would be my only thing, was to maybe have them just adjust their time. A 30 extra minutes out of a meeting is not gonna make or break, you know, they have, they have their own decisions that they have to follow, and, you know, allowing people the time to, to speak on that, I don't see an issue.
Right. I, I'm, I'm with you, I, I'd love that, I'd love that.
Councilwoman Birmaster, I mean, Beecher's here.
So, don't you...
What's wrong with your honor? Okay.
You can't do that in this form.
Right, oh, no, I understand the judge.
I did this in this form, for two reasons. Number one, I don't want to start amending, uh, the planning board rules and the scenic historic rules, and getting into their legislation, which has been there for a very long time, and the planning board, of course, has a state, uh, attachment to it. The only, there are public hearings between, uh, both of those bodies, and, uh, they are not required to have a public hearing, uh, constantly. Uh, they have, they get people there, and they talk about it, they approve it that night, and there's no need for public hearings and all of that. I didn't want to do anything that became burdensome to either one of those bodies, that became unnecessary. We already have public hearings. The people can go there en masse, and they have to listen to them in public hearings. So, all this was, is that a councilperson said, "Why can't I go to a meeting and talk about something I found out is gonna happen in my district? And why is, can a councilman at large, whose district is the whole city, all you three, you serve in our district, your district is the city of Utica? If there's somebody starts calling you from an area, and starts talking to you, you know about this, and you want to go there and speak on their behalf, you can go there. Otherwise, you can't go there." Now, all this did, is it didn't change their rules, that's not necessarily, it has nothing to do with their decision, so it doesn't affect their power. Uh, it's just a mere allowing the transparency of a councilperson going there, uh, who goes there representing this district, but does not represent the common council of City of Utica. Does not represent any of you, does not represent your point of view at all. And I, as I talked to Mr. Giorgio earlier, I said, "I did this in a plain language sort of way, so as not to burden the planning board, not to burden the scenic and historic," and I asked myself, "Why can't a councilman, uh, for his project, go to that meeting and talk about it? Just say, 'I'm getting a lot of heat about it,' I, or, 'People don't like the idea, I just want you to know about it,' and, uh, so on and so forth." All right, okay. And then they, they do whatever they want to do. And I didn't want to give the impression, we were not gonna let them do anything they want to do, because that's not what the intent of the legislation was. I told Ms. Friend, that, uh, the two most important bodies, where you might want to appear and, and say something, on the planning board and scenic and historic, because both of them have to be involved, if you're gonna go forward. Believe, a scenic and historic is very important, they have to have a certificate. I know, I went through scenic and historic, and they're very thorough. Uh, but, we let everybody come here, and why can't they let a councilperson go there? Now, if a councilman goes there, and wants to speak, you can't speak. That's the present rule, as I understand it. And I don't...
Could sign him an email.
So, I drew it in such a way, that it made it, uh, I did not infringe upon what the statute says, and what the, our charter says, and our ordinance says, it's, it just empowers you individually to go there. Now, whether you want to do that or not, is up to you, but I'm explaining the form I used. The form that was, uh, discussed between Ms. Friend and I earlier, was a different form, Ms. Friend, and I tell you, I have, I have to take, I have to research this thing.
Your first.
And this is what I came up with, to being the least intrusive of another body, of which you're not a part of. So, I, I know no other way to write it that way, and I recommend it in this way, and I think the Corporation Counsel's Office is not gonna be too excited about this, when it gets up to, nor the mayor. However, you start tampering about making them, everything's a public hearing and all that, now you're changing everything. I, at this point, I don't support that legally. I have not researched that, and I don't, I can't speak for the representative from the Corporation Counsel's Office. I would imagine, uh, that would raise some questions in there. And I'm not asking you to vote for or against this matter, that's not my job, I'm just explaining why the form is the way it is, and why it's, uh, the least intrusive it can be, uh, to prevent any, uh, repercussions from the bodies. They're not gonna like it anyway, but at least, it doesn't have any effect on their powers. And...
Thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you, your honor.
I'm explaining why I did a local law, and why I used that section.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, Councilwoman Beecher's here at the floor.
Yes, I just, uh, I just want to be sure that I understand this. So, going forward, if we pass this, the only person that would represent somebody in the sixth ward would be myself and the three at large.
No.
No.
Correct.
Any district councilman, ever, is, is what I wrote it...
Yes, you're only representing your district, correct?
It says, "A council member," doesn't say, "to your specific district."
It has to do with councilmembers.
Okay.
Any councilmember.
In their district.
In their district. So, I can't go to Celeste area and lobby about stores?
Yes, you can.
Well, we shouldn't have it that way, I don't think.
In their district.
In their district.
In their district.
The only reason you would go there, is if there was something in your district that was happening in that district, that might affect you. We, we were not making it a council thing, we're just making it a person who's in the district can ask, and the council at large, the whole city is their district.
Right, I have no problem with the council at large going anywhere, they take care of the whole city.
Mr...
But if something's in the sixth ward, that's my area to take care of. I don't need somebody from, somebody else coming...
It's right in there.
But it doesn't say exclusively their district...
Wait, 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 I have the floor here. You're saying it's in there, but he's saying no, so that's why I asked the question.
It says here, let me just, this is nice, it says here, that, members of the common council have to speak at planning board meeting, uh, on proposals in their district.
Okay, so...
Now, if you want to go and speak there at a proposal in somebody else's district, you can go there at a public hearing. So, you do get to speak there, yes.
At the public hearing, but at the public hearing, but not at the general meeting?
Correct.
No, you don't speak at the general meeting...
But I can in my district.
Because I thought...
Correct. Okay, that's why I asked.
Because, I don't want to make it any different than it is. The only reason, if, if any, any councilman from the six districts thought that something in the fourth district they were interested in, they could go to a public hearing.
Right.
But, as, but the fourth district councilman, he can go there at any meeting that they have.
Right, okay.
So, because, I said, "That's special."
Right.
I, that's why I did it this way.
Thank you.
And I didn't want to expand it to, because you don't represent anybody when you go there, really. You're, you're a councilman, but you don't represent the common council of City of Utica. You're a councilman representing people who are in a confined district, and they live in the sixth district, and they're calling you on the phone.
Right, that's exactly what should be done, right, okay.
But you don't wait for a public hearing.
Right.
You don't have to wait for a public hearing.
That's why I don't believe that they should be...
But if you want to go about something that's happening in the first district downtown, you go to a public hearing.
Right, that's why I don't believe that at their initial meeting, the public needs to speak. They will get to speak at the public hearing. You have, you're gonna have your representative from that district able to speak, and then you go to the public hearing afterward, where they all could speak there anyways.
That's correct.
Right, everybody gets to speak here.
Right.
Only, I made you a little bit special.
It's all, it's all that says. Okay, council, co, I'm sorry, you all set, Joseph, wait, wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm good.
You all set? Councilman DeBrennan?
I'm good.
You all set, you got your question answered?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilwoman Klosmo Testa?
So, two things, two things, eh, well, it might be three. So, it says, "In their district," can we just put, "in their district only," just add that, so that they, I mean, at, at the end of the day, everybody votes on district-wide issues, whether it's not their district or not, okay? That, that's, that's, that's a, that's an issue that I have, right? Like, at the end of the day, we might not have something to say at the time, but...
I think that's, that's verbose.
But, it's verbose. But, I'm just saying, for my personal...
I'm saying, yes, but I'm saying it's verbose, and I think that you are...
"In their district" means the same thing to me, I don't think the word only is gonna change the test.
Everybody read, everybody read the legislation, and still questioned you on whether or not it meant their district or not. So, that's number one. Number two is, the councilmember shall be allotted time to be determined by the members of the planning board. So, what happens if the planning board says, "Guess what, I don't want you to speak tonight?" I mean, you've got zero, you've got 12 seconds to speak. I mean, don't you think, like, a specific time amount, like, maybe a, a maximum of three minutes, that you, that is mandated to be allowed to them, in order to speak on behalf of that?
Yep, that's a good idea.
And, and the last, the last issue that I have, okay? We are, we are councilpeople, right? I was a district six ward councilperson for eight years, I enjoyed it. There was not every person in my district that agreed with my opinion, right? Let's use an asphalt plant, for example. There was people in my district that wanted it, there was people in my district that didn't want it. The only reason why I say I would be a little reserved, as a district councilperson speaking on behalf of it, is because you represent an entire district. And just because you might formulate a personal opinion, that you are not in favor, or in favor of something, doesn't necessarily mean that you speak on behalf of your entire district with that.
That's everything you do.
It's everything we do, but, but this, but this allowing that time specifically to speak on behalf of giving your own personal statements, I guess, I, I would, I, as a councilperson, would have a little reservation on. And that, again, because you, I don't know, if, if, if you were to do it, I guess, maybe, why not allow, and I don't think it would be even, to be intrusive, to allow a minimum of, you know, or, or a maximum time of 12 minutes, or, or 10 minutes, to give the entire body, 'cause say, if I have three minutes, right? Um, and an at-large councilperson goes and speaks, that's six minutes, right? Why not just make it a minimum amount of time of 10 minutes, that somebody has to, that anybody could come prove their point to that body?
I have an answer to that.
Okay, and I would, I would appreciate that.
My answer is, I didn't want to tamper with their rights, the planning board and the scenic, I don't want to tamper with their rights. Would, if they know you're coming, and you're right about another thing, just think how little you would use this. Because, when you go there, you're not representing anything, when you think about it, because there are 3,000 people who live in the district, some 6,000, and Mr. Irving's district, I think, there's close to 12,000. He's just speaking for anybody. He's just had people come and complain to him, and he just tells them what the complaints are. And if that raises some, uh, more review by them, or gives them some pause about something, fine, but he doesn't represent 12,000 people and what they think, in fact, you never really do. So, tampering with how many time, minutes you're gonna speak, I stay away from that. Let the chairman do that. Uh, they might want to hear more from you.
But this technically doesn't give you, give them the right to give you the time to speak.
You see what I mean? You're going into another body. I made it as plain, as simple as possible, because you don't represent, really, anybody when you go there, technically.
100%, but it...
And you, there's no way I could write that, and I'm not gonna try to...
Put it at the end of the day...
But when something happens, when you were the councilman from the sixth district, and something's happening down there, and they're calling you on the phone, and you go to the planning board, and he tell you, "You can't say what people are telling you," uh, you're gonna be, "Come to the public hearings." Well, I'm saying, you don't have to go to the public hearing under this. You can go there and say, "This is what I'm hearing."
Right, right.
And that's it. And then the people who call you can say, "Well, at least, a councilwoman, Tessa, went there and said something."
I, I get that, wholeheartedly.
And then the other people call you up and say, "I like that."
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I just...
People will call you up and tell you how much they like something.
I guess, according, according to the way that this local law reads...
I could be...
What are you saying? I didn't, I missed them, 'cause I'm...
I can second that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure your phone was ringing off the hook, telling you, "Gee, what a great councilwoman I'm talking about, I follow you that." They call you, and they don't like anything. And you bet, and you respond.
Councilmember?
This is respond.
All right, we're all set, we're all set with discussion.
That's it, I give up.
Thank you.
The last, the last, the last question, the last, I guess, point I'm gonna make, is according, is according to...
Excuse me, Councilwoman Klosmo Testa has the floor?
Thank you.
Please continue, Samantha.
The way this local law is written, doesn't necessarily mean that the Planning and Scenic Historic Commission, they don't have to technically allow you to have that time, because it states that they shall be allotted, it doesn't mean that it's, it's, it's mandatory of them to allow you time.
So, you want the word "shall" to change to "must"?
But, but my point is, is that the way, that the way that it's written, is that they don't have to allow you time. So, if, the way I'm reading this local law, is, "As a councilmember, shall, shall be allotted time." So, if I'm at a scenic and historic meeting, and I say, "Can I have time to speak?", and they say, "No, no, we're not gonna give you time to speak, 'cause it's not, we're not mandated to give you that time to speak," doesn't matter the way your local law was written. So, I guess, that's, that's the only thing that I would say, is, if you're putting this legislation forward, maybe "shall" is a little...
Must?
It, it should say "must," because we've gone through this a lot of times, in the way our legislation is written.
You all set, Samantha, that the president would like the floor?
Sure.
All right. The first thing I want to mention is, "Shall" is the operative legal term you would use in this case. And, um, it says, "Shall be allotted time to be determined." Um, it doesn't say zero time, and, the, when I read this, and I believe the way that the judge wrote this, is that, they will be bound to give the person time to speak, absolutely, it's just to be, it's a time to be determined. So, there's some time, but it's organizationally, maybe at the end of the meeting, before the meeting, before the proposal, after the proposal, it's, they still have control over their own agenda.
So, I shall give you 30 seconds to speak your piece, and just continue to insult the numbers that I'm supposed to be having.
And if that, if that is the case, after a local law, this is my own opinion, now, that's why I want it on the floor. If, if that is the case, after this local law, if this was passed, then that would be a whole different, the whole point of this, I think, was to, so, for example, before the scenic historic meeting, I sent a pretty involved email to the entire board, right? I didn't do it publicly, so, pub, you know, that email could have been read, could have not been read, et cetera, right? I think the reason this was proposed, was so that those things could be done publicly, and they have to hear you out publicly, right? If this is passed, and they don't give you any time, one, they'd be not in accordance with this, and if they only gave you five seconds, that, that would be completely absurd. I think that would be a whole level of unprofessionalism, that even here, we have not seen.
You're opening up a can of worms, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Doing anything else to this is open-
I think we should give it, in its entirety, a shot, the way it reads, councilmembers. The only thing I do have here is one little typo. I, I can't believe that a councilwoman friend did not see the typo. Do you see it?
No, yeah. Well, councilmembers should be able to-
No, 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 it's a simple typo. It's a simple one. I'm, I'm a simple guy. Can you see it?
No.
P.S.
Oh, you mean the O, yeah, the O, yeah.
Okay, so this has to sit in its final form, so would you just please correct-
It's just P.S. instead of O.
Yes.
It's literally a typo, literally.
It's literally a typo. The P's next to the O when you type anything. So, other than that, we can put this in- This would not- No, leave it alone for now, let's leave it alone.
I, I don't like the word "shall."
That's all right.
Because we've argued about "shall" several times in this study.
No, we've argued, we've argued about "shall" because we haven't used it, and we've used the word "will", which passed useless legislation.
It was "shall" or "must," "shall" or "must."
Other than that, we, this piece of legislation, because it is a local law, councilmembers has to sit on the table for seven days. Um, is there any additional discussion on this piece of legislation? Okay. Um, I think that, uh, nothing coming out of committee of the whole. Going once, twice? Okay. Um, I think we can recess for at least 15 minutes to our, oh, wait. Councilmember Frank?
Just wanted to go through everything in the committee of the whole. Does anybody have any questions?
Just asked it.
Okay, you did? I, I didn't hear you, I was reading. So, nothing there?
Yes.
I know that-
One thing, um-
Councilperson Klasimo had some questions, uh-
There's a, there's several questions that I have. Um, number one is, in regards to the issue to the classic, they will be here tonight at 7:30. So, at some point in time, if we could just, you know, reverse our rules of order to allow them to get a proclamation when they all get here, I would appreciate that. The second, the second part that, the second part that I have is, there, there's gotta be some explanation in Heather, maybe I don't expect it from you tonight, and, and this is something that I think maybe even the engineering department be here, could, that Mike being here could help us on. There's, there's several, um, I guess, contracts that have went out in regards to firehouses being fixed, and Bailey View, and so on and so forth. I've been hearing through the grapevine, and not necessarily anybody in the city, um, outside people, construction workers that I know, that they, that the contracts for the city aren't maybe in the best shape that they should be in, in order to be put out. So, one of the suggestions that I have, and I know that you're talking about architect designs and stuff like that, and trying to get, you're doing everything you can with the manpower that you have, I understand that. So, this has nothing to do with you, it's just, it's the way that life's being thrown at you right now. Why not have the possibility of putting contracts out there by maybe doing it by design? So, allowing maybe the company that you give the contract to, putting forth the, the architect designs themselves, and eliminating some of that effort off of you, in trying to help move these projects move forward quicker, so to speak?
When, when we do a project, you know, quite often, we'll retain an architect. Um, I think there's several that I've, this year, of course, but this is probably the most that my office has ever put out, shared in the 22 years I've been in there. For roofs, I hired Benachi to put the roof spec together, we do the front end. For air handler, Town put the roof spec together for me, um, we did the front end. The, um, firehouses, the firehouse, the police station, those projects, kind of with Benachi. I only do clubhouse, it's so far. Using a guy out of Richfield Springs. So, I'm using architects to do the specs. So, I mean, if it was a spec that my department put out itself, I would absolutely agree with you that I may not be the best spec writer in the world, probably.
No, I'm actually not talking about you at, at all, by any means. I'm just saying, trying to-
So, when I do, I do enlist, and we pay for the service. I mean, it's part of their fee.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, so why not just put out a, a contract by design to try and say, hey, say, let's listen. Hey, we, you know what? We can't get the architects for this work, but we need this work done.
So, basically, I think what you're saying is you want to do like a design-build project.
Design-build, yes, yes.
I don't believe we can do by law. Because there's, there's bidding, I mean, there, there's all sorts of things that we have a little bit more leeway with the, with the legislation that got passed. Um, but we had a real tough time with our legal-
Stop, I'm, I'm talking about this right, yeah, I'm talking about this right now. All right, I will. All right, bye, sorry.
I'm sorry. We had a real tough time with our legal department on, like, um, the design-build and the skate park, and, you know, the splash pad. They really had a tough time with that contract, and we really had to push it. And I really had to, to prove some points to the law department for them to allow me to do that. So, to like, to take the project for Valley View, which is, you know, gonna be a big-
You're going to have somebody for that, I'm pretty sure of.
The, there's no way I could ever push that through with a design-build contract.
So, so, wait, I just, let's, like, the firehouses. I mean, I know that we put the roofs on, but there's still a lot of work that hasn't been done on the firehouses, which, fine, I, I underst-
Someone to get us the bid specs to do that. These are, this is not-
But this is what I'm saying, the bid specs, so why not, why not try and possibly put something like out a design-by-build for, to be able to finish the firehouses quicker than you have to? Like, I know that Central's getting taken care of, but Whitesboro Street looks like a piece of crap stuff.
Whitesboro Street, you know it? You should be ashamed of your own building.
Oh, agree, oh, wholeheartedly, leaking, throw out the roof.
I have tents all over this building.
But, but that's what I mean, so why?
We get to allocate the money, we just-
But, but this is what I'm saying, so, so wait, why, why not possibly try and change that? You know, do, maybe throw it out there as a design-by-build, and, and seeing if we can have that.
I have to take the lowest responsible bid-
We passed that legislation where you don't have to change it. We changed it, so that you could do, you could go most responsible bidder. So, I'm just saying, listen to me. As, as me to you-
I anticipated your, your question.
Correct.
So, I actually, because the J and B was awarded the contract for the firehouse and City Hall.
Right.
And they told us in the spring that we probably wouldn't get City Hall done, but they really hoped they'd be able to do the fire department this fall.
Right.
Which they have-
Guys, can somebody, come on. Please.
So, we're really having, they're having a tough time with installations. A lot of contractors are, some contractors went up and bought up as much as they can. It's not the contract I ended up with, even though they told me they had insulation, but-
Listen to me, I see, for example, we've had the, the, the parking lot for underneath the bridge on Broad Street done. Okay, we still have roads that haven't been finished inside the city.
Yeah.
Okay? Can't use the excuse that material's not an issue, and I don't care if it's the state, I don't care if it's this, I don't care if it's that.
Well, then we don't have anything to talk about. Then we don't have anything to talk about, about the road. Because if you don't want to hear what the reasons are-
But, but, but this is what I'm saying. I mean, and I'm, I'm just saying, if you're going side by side of finishing a street, and then building a parking lot that you have the, the curbs for, I mean, that's, how do you not have curbs not to finish it?
The city went out and bought the curbs for that parking lot. We anticipated-
So, there's material.
But see, no, let me finish. You know, I love you, but the biggest problem I have with you is you never let anybody talk.
Go ahead, finish.
So, if you want to hear the answer, then let me talk.
Sure, go ahead.
Otherwise, don't answer the question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay?
Go ahead, finish. Fair, fair.
Fair, it's fair. Okay, so, yeah, we had a lot of problems with material. Castings, they only make them once a year for the city, because we have our name on it. Um, the concrete, seven to 14 days. It's only two weeks, but I get it. We're having trouble getting concrete. The curb, we, we bought the curb for that parking lot, the city did. The curb is in our contract, they can't get anymore. So, then the city went out and found curb again. Heather got on the phone and found us curb. I didn't have the time, and I've been out of town a lot the last six weeks. So, I mean, we're trying to work through the problem. I absolutely agree with it, the roads aren't done, and they should be done. We, we tried to, to, to put a caveat on the contract that we had five weeks.
Time out, time out, time out. Councilpeople, councilpeople, we're in a meeting here.
Nobody called a motion in a second to end a meeting.
Let's go. Get in your seats, listen.
You've got 10 minutes left to your pre-committee meeting until the new meeting. Please.
So, so anyway, so we put language in the contract based on, on Barrett's recommendation. But the one thing they forgot about was the castings. We didn't anticipate the granite, so, I mean, we obviously had some problems. I mean, when we did Genesee Street the first night, I couldn't get enough trucks. We went, instead of being done by 6:00 a.m., Christ, we weren't done until noon. So, I mean, there's been a lot of problems this year.
And I don't think that paving's been a problem by any means. I mean, it's gone a lot longer-
It's embarrassing for me.
It's not.
Typically, typically, I mean, historically, we end up finishing up in October. Will be done in the middle of the month, 20th, probably. The, um, you know, we're doing everything we can. I have a complete schedule for the weather, depending on how the rest of the paving's gonna go.
I will say, it, just to echo what he said. We did speak with Barrett Paving, and they said, the, the one thing that we could do that would make everybody's life easier, and we could close streets up quicker, is to have an inventory of granite curving and our castings. If we do that, and I talked to Mike about it this week, we're gonna do that. So, that should help the supply chain.
And, and here's-
It would progress in emergency.
Here's my biggest thing, it had nothing to do with paving. I read, I mean, I know you guys have done a lot more paving this year than in previous years.
We're already over 5 million.
And I think that, I think that the paving schedule was not my problem, by any means. I was just saying, the, the fact of trying to find material for certain projects, so on and so forth. With that said, can we po, look at the possibility of, of maybe doing a design-by-build-
Yes.
-for the firehouses to please, I mean, we've got work that's gotta be done. I know contractors-
Inside that firehouse is an abomination. I absolutely agree with you, I've seen it myself.
Right.
It needs to get done. But we can't fix upstairs until we have roof.
Well, they, I've heard that, I've heard that they've, they finished the roof, or they're-
No, we've, we've patched it temporarily.
Okay, so it was a temporary fix.
This company, J and B, is responsible to keep that roof as dry as possible until they get a roof here. They're promising me, which is probably not a promise, that we do their best.
Right.
By May 31st, the roof will be done.
I mean, so, so, again, that's, that's the only thing that I'll, that I'll ask you is, I know contractors that are telling me, and they're, they're, they're people from not just Utica, they're people from outside the area, that they can do the work. The problem is, is that the fact that you need the architect- But that's, that's what I'm saying, that you need the architectural work done before that.
I think I only had four, three bidders, maybe.
So, let's, let's try the design-by-build and see if that doesn't work, if we can do that? And say, listen, we've exhausted every opportunity that we've had to try and do what we have to do with the money that we have and the time that we have. If this doesn't work, then what other choice do we have? I mean, that's all I'm saying, and that's, that's the whole reason why I wanted to bring it up.
So, can I, can I have the floor for a second here, since I invited the guest, sir?
I couldn't hear.
The design for what I supposed to do-
Can I have the floor, please?
Okay, so they've already got the architectural design for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
So, Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
But there's not even a bid out yet, a pre-bid.
Samantha, you have-
Okay.
All right, Samantha, Joe would like to say something.
So, can I say something, since I invited the guest, sir?
Yes, Joseph.
Okay?
Doesn't matter who invited him.
Well, whatever, but can I say something, please? So, the two questions I have, number one. I know I was reading stuff that aggravated me about, we didn't borrow money, we didn't do anything for the firehouse. The money is borrowed and a contract has been sent out, per Benachi, correct?
Correct.
No.
No, no, let me just-
Well, I'm just telling you what she ta-
No, can I answer?
Yeah, okay.
So, I handed out two sheets of paper for two different bond resolutions that this council did. The first one was May 2021. We borrowed in April of 2022, actually, January, April. You can see those, those, those categories. There was some money that we didn't borrow, right? Because we use ARCA. So, I wanted to be clear about that. So, when you ask about the firehouse, there is the firehouse, the major renovations to Central that we, that you all approved in May of 2021. We, we have that money. Let's turn to the next page. The next page is what the council approved in April of 2022. We have not borrowed that money yet, okay? We, we got the resolutions, so we've already begun that work, but we haven't expended most of it. Why would we borrow it if, if we're not expending it? We can borrow this money today, we could go out, Bill, Bill Morehouse has the ability to go borrow it today, but we don't need it.
But we, what I'm trying to say is, we gave you the authority-
Yes.
-for the money, because we came back, we adjusted 250 for it. We gave you the money to do this repairs.
Yes.
Are the repairs getting done? Is somebody, is, have, because-
So, let's talk about Whitesboro Street.
Well, and when, wait a second, when did you just say we did this? It's, it's six months, seven months ago, all I'm asking.
Yes.
Are they sent out, is it getting done?
We hired, we hired an architect and out.
Okay.
So, we RFP'd it out, we hired-
Okay.
Okay? He then has to bring, um, his team in to take a look at everything that goes on. So, I'll give you a great example. He brought his team in, and he isolated beyond what you see here, that we need to repair the fire state. It was actually a codes issue, which I'll be coming back to shortly, because I need another $100,000. I don't have enough money. But they are in the process of building bid specs for the, for the project, okay? But going back to Mike's car, if we don't put a roof on, right? We, we needed those repairs done before we could do any work inside. So, it's not about, this is we borrowing that money, the work has already begun on the bid spec.
Okay, okay.
For Central Firehouse.
So, so wait a second, I still have the floor. No, no, for Whitesboro Street, we're talking right now, not Central. Talking Whitesboro Street.
Just a temporary roof fix.
Yes, temporary roof fix.
No, that's not true. You borrow money to fix the roof, you do it temporarily now, but, but there's money in the budget to fix the roof and fix the repairs. That's all, okay? So, it is there.
Yes.
It's there. We borrowed the money to do it. It's there.
Yes.
Mike, a question for you as far as paving goes, okay? We paved, last year, we paved 42 streets. Your paving schedule's 27 this, this year. I understand the granite, the curbs, and all that. We put in that paving, we made a big point to put in a five-week window, okay? Five-week window. Is there language in that contract that says if we can't get supplies, we don't have to hold them to it? Remember, you told us, you told us, and I'm only going by what you told me. You said that the contract's gonna be-
You're talking about liquidated damages?
No, I'm talking, you, when you started the street, you had five weeks to finish it.
Right.
And you told us, we're gonna have to pave less streets this year, because the contract's gonna be higher. Obviously, you don't have the granite, okay? So, is there wording in that language that says, because they don't have supplies, we don't charge them? Or are we getting money back from the contractor?
No, first of all, I mean, prices are higher this year because of the proling, which affects everything.
I'm not asking you about that, I know that, that's why we cut it. I'm asking you about the five-week window.
It is not in there. It was a conscious decision by this administration, because we had a couple of problems. The concrete, right now, it's only seven to 14 days out. This time, three months ago, we're talking a month afterwards. So, if we can't get concrete, and we can't get granite, and we can't get trucks to deliver material, by putting a five-week turnaround from beginning to end, there's no way it can be met. So, when this contract was put out, there was an end date put on that all of it could be completed by August 31st. When you posed the question to me last Friday, okay, and you wanted it, I then got in and took a look at the contract. Today, the word "contract" was applied, met, and changed that date, amended that date, through a change order for October 31st. Um, and so, we just felt this administration, that the five-week turnaround wasn't going to be met. It could not be met.
Okay.
The five-week turnaround is utilized and grown, where they have concrete curving.
They didn't, they didn't mean it either.
Yeah, they didn't mean it either.
So, when they're doing that, I, I understand that. So, when they're doing that, I understand that.
Joseph, try to sum this up because we got one more.
Okay, I got one more question.
He did come down and say that last year, he did. He did.
Okay.
We just felt this administration...
One last question. So, we gave them the break because they couldn't get the materials, which I understand. Do you think they would've gave us a break and came and brought their equipment, did all the streets in North Utica, in our area, that didn't need any curving and didn't need anything? You could've had them all done. But they didn't want to do that. I get it, because it costs money to bring their trucks.
They will have come in three times, three separate times for mobilization this summer to do paving.
All right. All right.
I just... I did bring it up before last year when I just did one final sweep of everything.
Okay.
All right, Mike.
Because they've already finished some stuff.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Heather, you have the floor for one more minute, then we have to get to our other meeting.
Is there any more questions when I handed out or on the paving?
The only thing that I'm gonna ask is, please, we need a committee meeting where we're not being rushed, where people aren't shouting out questions, and we're actually sitting down and talking line by line item on the things that we have, and you can give an explanation to this, and you can give an explanation to the stuff that you've already done. And we can maybe sit and have legal counsel talk to us whether or not that a design-by-build is something that we can or cannot do. We cannot be rushing, you know, serious projects like this to the tune of $3, $4, or $5 billion in 15 minutes. It's not fair to you. It's not fair to the council people. So, I mean, in some point in the near future, like maybe in the next week or so, we gotta have a committee meeting. Council of Debrango, please sum it up.
I give Councilperson Classmo to set the date and time, and I will be there.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Finish up, please, Heather.
Yeah. It would help us that we don't just get... We want to hear about paving.
Right.
We need individual questions. That makes us prepared. I got a piece of paper to be prepared for you tonight.
Agreed.
Trying to guess what you're looking for.
I appreciate that, so thank you.
So, please, council members, Heather had a great idea. Please email the questions to Heather, and she'll make sure either department that's here to answer them, so at least they're prepared to answer questions that are on our table. I'd like to conclude our pre-meeting and give it to our illustrious president, Michael Gleamy.
You all get no break, actually. Starting the meeting.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The City of Utica Common Council Clerk, please call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Ervin, Beatrice Williamson, Classimo Testa, Debrango, Gleamy Alpresente.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for
The first order of business this evening are the minutes from the previous meeting, which have been posted. I need Code 360 for the public and council to view. Do I have a motion? What's the motion, a dispense?
Please.
Okay. A second from Williamson. Any opposed to dispensing of the reading with the minutes? Reading of the minutes. Okay, the minutes have been accepted by the council. We have a public hearing, as usual, but there are no properties for that public hearing, nor are there ordinances. So, that public hearing is now closed. We're gonna move on to public comment period.
Mr. President, is it possible we can do a proclamation earlier?
Sure.
Are you ready for your proclamation, or no?
No, they're not gonna be here. They're not gonna be here until 7:30, so then I guess we gotta do it later then.
Then carry on, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, the first person I'd like to bring up this evening is Caleb LaRocca. Yes. The common council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rules. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
All right, the microphone clip, for some reason, has been broken, so you'll have to just hold the mic up. Please state your name, and you may begin.
My name is Caleb LaRocca. I am a keeper at the Utica Zoo. I have been there for over two years now, and I've been a professional animal keeper for about five. I'd like to start by thanking the council for hearing us today, and especially Councilors Ayello and Friend for sponsoring our presence. The employees at the Utica Zoo, including zookeepers, veterinary technicians, education specialists, groundskeepers, administrative specialists, and gift shop employees, have decided to pursue a vote to unionize in order to seek better working conditions and to have our voices heard by administration. We seek to improve our lives by reducing burnout and turnover and ensuring that our labor, experience, and health are appropriately valued. In my more than two years at the Utica Zoo, I've seen far too many team members leave due to just overall stress, burnout, and they just get fed up, and they have too much, and they have to leave for their own health or for other reasons. And I have great respect for my coworkers, especially our current team, which is the best group of people that I've ever had the pleasure to work with. Through making our voices heard, we aim to make the zoo a better place to visit for the people of Utica, a better place to work for its employees, and a better place to live for its animals. We hope to join Buffalo and Syracuse Zoos by becoming part of the CSEA Union. And that is what I have to say right now. Thank you for listening.
Hello, everybody on the council. My name is Garrett Buck.
Hey, Garrett, I'm sorry. Hang on one second. I was trying to figure out if it was a different group coming up. Next speaker's Garrett Buck. The common council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record. You may begin. Thank you.
My name is Garrett Buck, and like Caleb before me, I would like to thank the entire council for their support today, especially Councilors Ayello and Friend, as well as Beth Hall and the organizers of CSEA who have helped us get this far today. I am one of the newer keepers at the Utica Zoo. I moved here in February, and I was honestly pleasantly surprised by how quickly I fell in love with both the zoo and the people that I work with. They're a great group of people, and I believe that they deserve really the best that the industry has to offer. I think that the zookeeping industry as a whole, including all other workers at the zoos, such as our gift shop, our maintenance, and our educators, stand to benefit greatly from both the collective bargaining power of a zoo, as well as the backbone behind it, to be able to bring issues to management and bring our boots-on-the-ground experience up to management, and be able to fix the zoo in ways that will make it better for everybody going forward, both the keepers, the animals, the educators, and the guests who come in the future. I hope that this resolution will help us receive voluntary recognition and will help us move forward peacefully and quickly with our incoming negotiations in the future. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Kalen Musty. The common council provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name, and you may begin.
Hi, hello. My name is Kalen Musty. I am an education and ambassador animal specialist with the Utica Zoo. I've been an educator for close to seven years now, and to start tonight, I would like to thank the council for having us here, for Councilors Ayello and Friend for their support of our union, and also to every member of the community who has come out tonight to support us. One of the things that I love the most about being part of the Utica Zoo is its connection to the community and the community here, and having your support really does mean the world to us. You know, I believe that the staff at the Utica Zoo are some of the most talented and dedicated people I've ever had the privilege to work with, and they deserve to have their voices heard. And I believe that this union is the way to make those voices heard, to make that happen. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for the zoo to become all that it can be by taking as best advantage of the talent there as possible and by keeping that talent. When, you know, when workers are frustrated, feel unheard, unseen, unrespected by management, we lose those workers to other jobs, to go into places where they will be heard. And so, I want Utica Zoo to be the best it possibly can be, to be the best part of its community that it can be. So, I really want to thank everybody from the community who has come out here tonight in support of us and in support of our union. So, thank you guys very much.
All right, council, that was the last speaker this evening. Public comment period is now closed. Thank you all who've come to the meeting this evening. The common council does not have any guests, so we're gonna move on to communications from the mayor. Before I begin, I just want to mention that I typically change this from the first person to the third person, but it was rather complicated this evening, so I'm just gonna read it as is. So, I'm gonna state that this is the mayor of the City of Utica addressing the council. This is the mayor's message to the council that I'm reading. There are several updates I would like to share with the common council. Last week, I announced that the city is requesting proposals from parties interested in leasing the clubhouse and restaurant bar area at Valley View. I would like to note that the current occupant of that facility was granted a 10-year lease through a similar process in 2003. My administration renewed the current lease for 10 years, as is allowed under the terms of the lease, but must seek proposals before it grants a new 10-year period under the same terms. I, like most Uticans, have many fond memories that were formed at Valley View over the last two decades, and I recognize its importance to Utica's residents and their culture. My administration will review all proposals with due appreciation for the facility's history, significance, and its future. I encourage all interested parties to submit a proposal. Before I continue, this is the mayor's message to the council. My administration also announced progress in regards to several improvements to Utica's park system. I was joined by Councilman Beatrice in announcing the construction of two dog parks. I was joined by Councilperson Ayello to announce improvements around some mini park areas in downtown, including the restoration of the fountain at Liberty Square. Councilperson Friend and I were at Wonkell Park to celebrate the park's new pathways that make it fully accessible for all residents. I would also like to acknowledge Councilman Miola's support for building a new soccer field at South Park Drive and Councilman Ervin's contribution to improving Kemble Park. When the common council and the administration share common goals, the results can be transformational. After the COVID-19 pandemic, the administration made a decision to use recovery funds to upgrade our historic park system. We are blessed with the third-largest park system in the state. These projects ensure the amenities in our parks will facilitate residence of all ages, abilities, and interests. These investments help to make our city more attractive. More importantly, a health parks... A healthy park system will make it easier for residents to live a healthy lifestyle. Finally, I would like to acknowledge that I was excited to see more progress at Harbor Point recently. I'd like to thank the common council for passing the required resolution of support for Mohawk Valley Gardens Plan to turn the old 1933 building into a one-of-a-kind facility overlooking a waterfront that our residents will now be accessing for the first time in decades. I would also like to congratulate Starbucks for opening its doors for the first time in Utica last week. The Harbor Point Land Development Corporation and the City of Utica, including its common council, put a lot of time and energy into the restoration of the Harbor Point, and it's starting to pay off. There will be a lot more progress to report in the near future, but the development of the historic park of our city is welcome news. Again, that was the mayor's message to the common council. Thank you. Reports from the city officers. Stephanie Giorgio, corporation council.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Noonan.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Chief Hinkerson.
No report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any cash reports?
The City of Utica cash report for August 2022 totals $83.651 million received and filed.
I'd also like to note that the golf fund cash accounts and the urban renewal agency cash account are showing balances of $371,978.50 and $1,022,310.14 respectively during the same time period. Councilperson Classimo Testa, I know you were referencing those balances earlier, so it is in the cash report. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First district, councilmember Katie Ayello, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the zoo employees again for coming out and for your engagement and your comments tonight, and also for those in the district who missed it. We were... The fountains are back on in downtown. Huge thank you to Stephanie Wirth. And Liberty Bell Park has been redone. There's gonna be more work done in the mini park there for Ellen Hanna. And then I've had some concerns, again, I think, from people over in the State Street area, so of what's happening on their road. So, I just want to recap in case people have missed it. That was one of the few streets in the city that was able to get repaved this year. We're getting more planters over there, trying to just beautify the area but make it safer. We slowed down traffic for... With the school right there, especially with the hospital coming. And we will also be getting solar street signs for that area, and then there will be an ARPA camera at the end of the street. So, State Street, that's just a few of the initiatives we're doing. I hope to take those same measures as time and finances permit and start to explore those options for things like Bleecker Street and South Street as we go forward. So, if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out on that. Thank you. That is all for tonight.
Thank you. Second district, councilmember Robert Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a shout out to my son. It was his birthday yesterday. He's a good boy, so I'm proud to have him. That's all I have time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Third district, councilmember Celeste Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to... I'm really appreciative that the audience is so full tonight with people who live in Utica, love Utica, want Utica to be better. Thank you for being here tonight. That's great. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of giving... Someone who is interviewing for a job at one of our local colleges, and I got to give her a tour of the city for three hours and take her to lunch and show her things around. And I just want to let everybody know, she was really impressed by how much work is happening. She really... She commented on that all by herself, that, boy, there's just so much construction and work and stuff like that, and isn't that great? So, it was nice to sort of see that from a stranger's eye, you know, somebody who hadn't been to Utica before, to see it through her eyes. So, that was really terrific. And that's all I have, Mr. President, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth district, councilmember and majority leader, Frank Miola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just briefly like to thank the union leaders for bringing this group together. Again, CSEA is a very big part of our DPW, and I'm glad that they're bringing more people together and unionizing. Thank you very much, guys.
Fifth district, councilmember Vanessa Ervin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to let you guys know, I talked about the program I was running in the City of Utica for 18, 24 years. I was going to school or I'm getting jobs, and the program was postponed in July, but I'm proud to say Utica, out of the 20 locations in the state of New York, we met our goals in July, and they extended the program till March. So, I'm looking to steal other people's money now from other cities. So, just to let you guys know, we did get extended till March, and we are looking forward to getting more money to put more kids to school or get them jobs within our city. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sixth district, councilmember Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to congratulate some businesses that opened up in the sixth ward, and I'd like, you know, if everybody possible could support them and wishing the best of luck. We have... These opened up within the last six months. We had Desserts Beyond the Ordinary in the shopping center. Utica Bread just opened up in the shopping center. Bella Regina moved back to our area, and last week, as the mayor mentioned, Starbucks opened up. So, it's pretty good. I'm glad to see that we're having a lot of business coming in, and I'm glad, you know, I'm asking everybody, please go out and support these great local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember-at-large and minority leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson-at-large Samantha Classimo Testa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just gonna touch base on a few things. We had a flood mitigation task force meeting today. They've been pretty productive over the past couple of meetings that we've had, trying to, you know, just touch base on a lot of the flooding issues that we have inside the city and, you know, working forward to see what else we can do as a body and the administration to help, you know, mitigate some of the flooding issues that we have inside the city. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on, I want to say I appreciate everybody from the Utica Zoo that's in the union that's here tonight. As a union member myself, I see our president of the Utica Teachers Association in the audience, so I definitely see the work in solidarity. The issue that I'm going to bring up with this body in particular is that they are supporting the Utica Zoo union members, and that's great, and I support it wholeheartedly as well. However, we've neglected our own members of the Utica Fire Department and the people that we represent inside the city. They've been without a contract. They fought through a pandemic. We've taken away... Not me in particular, but this body has taken away positions to their manpower. Emergency callbacks have been needed. It's been a pretty big detriment, the way the fire department has been treated inside the city. And while I appreciate the resolution and support of the Utica Zoo, the only thing that I will ask this body while supporting other union members is to support the union members that they represent as well. As a Utica Teacher Association member, we've been without a contract for two years. I've never seen this body pass a resolution and supported them. Again, with that said, if you're going to do for one union, everybody stands in solidarity when it comes to a union, okay? We're a public body. We're in the public presence. This body should treat their fire department the way they treat other union members as well, and that's one thing that I'm gonna say, and it has bothered me. My husband's on the Utica Fire Department. The conditions that he works in is deplorable. Deplorable. You have ceilings caving in. You have asbestos that he's been working in for the past, God only knows how long, inside those departments. So, while we support members of the Utica Zoo, I hope that we will support members of the Utica Fire Department inside the city that have also been without a contract for two years in the deplorable conditions that they've worked in. The last thing that I'm gonna touch... Two last two things I'm gonna touch base on. We have a law on the books known as temporary housing, and it states that any tent, trailer, or other structure used for human shelter which is designed to be transportable and which is to not be attached to the ground is considered public housing after 30 consecutive days. I think that the issue that we've seen in Knightah Square needs to be addressed with the tents that have been inside the garden, which have been for more than 30 days, and the tents that have been inside the garden, which have been for more than 30 days, and it's up to the codes department to go ahead and address that issue with, with the codes that we have in the, on the books. Last but not least, this council knew that I put in a resolution to support handicap-accessible playgrounds inside the city. And while the mayor acknowledges everybody for their hard work and working hard with him, he failed to mention that a resolution was put in by me nine months ago in regards to handicap, handicap playgrounds inside the city and to make it accessible for those that, you know, need accessibility inside playgrounds. And I just want to say why I appreciate the work that he's put in. There's, there's people inside the community that have put that idea forward, and they should be recognized as well. So, but that's, that's all, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. President Protemp and Council Large Frank DeBrango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Those members of the Utica Zoo here that come in tonight, appreciate you coming, the CSEA as well. We had a pre-conference meeting, and we decided to go full council on the resolution that was brought up by Councilperson Aiello and Friend. So you're going to get, you got the support of full council on that, and good luck. CSEA is, I've been a CSEA member way back when I worked at Moak Valley Community College. I was a member of a union, Utica Fire Department, Local 32, for a little over 20 years. So I understand the needs for a union, better pay, better benefits, but you get good quality help, and that's what you need, especially, you know, when you're dealing with, with animals and, and things of that nature. So hopefully you'll organize, and, and good luck to you. As far as that earlier meeting that we had, a couple of the members just got up, walked out, and, you know, we were still in, we were still in conference. I got, I got a little heated. I said, you know, our department heads, you know, they take their time to come out. They take their time to, you know, answer our questions, and I couldn't hear anything. The people were coming in at the time, and, you know, I do want to hear, you know, their reasons why some projects weren't getting done, and I understand, you know, delays in, in equipment and, and whatever it may be. But I just want to make sure that we all stay in session until we're, until we're granted, you know, that we, you know, could, could end our session and begin a new one as well. But it just got a little disturbing to me that everybody's just walking around, and I'm trying to focus on what's taking place with city government, and, and half of us weren't even paying attention. It's just, it's just not a good look for it. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, sitting through it, and when we're ready to recess, then we'll call for recess. That is all. Thank you.
Council President, may I have the floor for one, for one second as a point of order? May we, now that everybody is here for the union, I don't think it's necessary to keep them for the rest of our meeting, so can we put the resolution for them first and then acknowledge the members of the East Utica Classic through their proclamation after that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll move those pieces around if no one's opposed. Sounds good to me.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the proposed rule for any relevant legislation.
Okay. We'll still announce that it was Thursday ruled legislation, but we won't have to call for the motion. Thank you. All right. So here it is. Okay. We're going to start with proposed Resolution Number 16. It's a resolution in support of workers and CSEA Local 1000 at the Utica Zoo. Do we have someone to move this? Councilperson Friend?
Second.
Second from Colasimo Testa. It was sponsored by Friend and Aiello, but is now full council. Would you like me to read the resolution? Thank you. Whereas the Utica Zoo is an essential part of Utica's cultural and educational landscape and has made children and families happy and, and been a source of local pride for over a century. And whereas the success of the zoo relies on the work of its many employees, including zookeepers, educators, gift shop staff, building and ground staff, and veterinary technicians. And whereas achieving healthy and safe work environments and strong living wages and benefits will strengthen our community and grow our city as we all do our part to help it reach its great potential. And whereas unions, and whereas unions are the best means by which to safeguard the interests of workers in all sectors across Utica's economy, and whereas the Utica Zoo resides in Roscoe Conkling Park, leasing 80 acres from the city of Utica's extensive parks and parkway system, and the city will continue to be invested in the success of the zoo for generations to come. Therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Utica, standing in solidarity with the Utica Zoo workers, does hereby encourage the administration of the Utica Zoo to voluntarily recognize CSEA Local 1000 as the union that will represent these Utica Zoo workers as they seek fair pay and safe working conditions. Your votes.
I just want to briefly state, I take my students to the Utica Zoo every year for a field trip, so if you guys see me, come out and say hi. All right? Thank you.
Nineties adopted.
All right. Now, a proclamation. This is Resolution Number One, dated. I'm going to call for a motion to-
Mr. President, yes. Mr. President, can I motion to move that out of committee, sir?
All right, it's in-
I'll second.
Thank you. And before I say any opposed, it's, it's proposed Resolution Number One, submitted on 8/10/2022. Any opposed? All right, it's been removed from committee.
Motion to vote, Mr. President.
I gotta, I gotta make a motion to read the proclamation to everybody first, so, you know, mind, can we hold the vote till the end so I can come click the-
You can do that if you want.
Yeah.
Click the clicker?
Bring them up.
Okay. Come on, guys. Is everybody here yet? Oh, oh, okay. I was like, I thought I saw, saw these guys come in. Nice that they brought me a white shirt that says East Utica Classic on it. I've got one. I was, I was actually, I was actually on the committee for, for a brief time, but these guys are, God, they're like brothers to me. We started the East Utica Classic, what, back in 2000? Twelve years ago. It started as a Paul's Pub tournament, and then we kind of got a little crazy, and then we had to change it to the East Utica Classic, which started off as something fun, but actually turned into something that is beyond any appreciation that you guys have for this community. The money that you've raised for families in need is, is astonishing. So a proclamation and appreciation to the East Utica Classic. Whereas the annual East Utica Classic Golf Tournament was started in 2011 by residents of East Utica. And whereas the tournament has grown every year since and has allowed for the committee to donate thousands of dollars to local families in need, specifically to children who need the community's support. And whereas, speed in which the event has grown and the way the area has embraced their goal of giving back to the community has really been awe-inspiring. And whereas the tournament itself has quickly become a can't-miss annual event for one reason only. Not because of the great food and drinks, which could be a big part of it. We have all, we have all the great eateries there. Not because of the golf or the great atmosphere. It isn't any of those things, although they are present and accounted for every year. It is because the event embodies all the best of East Utica. East Utica and Utica's generosity is general, general is there, in general is there. And whereas the respect and loyalty to Utica's community permeates throughout, the spirit of Utica comes alive the minute you arrive at the event and throughout the year. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city of Utica recognize the efforts of the committee and the donations from everyone to the event. Now therefore, be it resolved, be it further resolved, that the first Sunday in August in the city of Utica be known as the East Utica Classic Day, and where we acknowledge them and thank them for their efforts because their commitment to life is life-changing to families in need. So I just want to acknowledge, I've got Brian Stamboli, Rocco Cronaccia, Anthony Ficoli, Joey Craciola, and John Goff. I mean, the work that they put in, I, I can't thank you guys enough, and it's, it's something to look forward to every year. So thank you.
You guys can vote now, yeah. We're back to our regular order of business here. We're going to begin with the minority properties.
Do you want to give everybody just, just a couple minutes to clear the audience if they'd like?
I mean, we're good.
Just one minute.
You know, it's typical.
I think you will form.
All right. Resolution Number One, dated 9/26/2022 this evening. It's calling for a public hearing on the sale of 932 and 934 Skyler Street. This is sponsored by Councilmember Burmaster. May we have a second? Miole? Thank you. Miole's the second. This is calling for a public hearing on the sale of 932 to 934 Skyler Street for a sum of $750. Public hearing will be October 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move 932, 934 Skyler Street to ordinance number two into committee.
Second.
Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number Three. Calling for a public hearing on sale of 1005 and 1009 Park Ave. This is sponsored by Councilmember Aiello. Is there a second? Burmaster's the second on that one. It is for a sum of $2,098, $2,098.54. Again, public hearing October 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number four for the sale of 1,005, 1,009 Park Ave into committee.
Second.
Okay. Williamson was the second on that. Any opposed? It's in committee. We will now call proposed Resolution Number Five. Calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1201 Seymour Ave to Carlos Morcetto, $250 from the Ori. Okay. It's sponsored by Councilmember Irvin, seconded by Burmaster. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number six, 1,201 Seymour Ave into committee.
I'll second.
Got a second from Burmaster. His hand up. Thank you. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number Seven. Calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1525 West Street. Sum of $20,000. October 19th will be the public hearing. It's sponsored by Irvin, second from, I have so many hands. I'm going to go with Beatrice on this one. Yeah.
I'll just keep my hand up for the rest of the-
Your votes.
In order to make it? Not making the cup for some reason.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number eight for the sale of 1525 West Street into committee.
Second from Colasimo Testa. Any opposed? It's in committee. Thank you. All right. Resolution Number Nine, sponsored by Councilmember Burmaster. Calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1112 Stark Street for a sum of $31,000. Second from Aiello. Your votes on the public hearing. Again, it's October 19th, 2022, 7:00 PM. The next council meeting.
Can we revote, please?
Clear the board. Hang on. Hang on. Clear it. It's got to be cleared.
No, it's just starting.
Yeah, but now they're going right to it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know why it's, little technical difficulties up there.
Six, seven, and eight.
Two more. All right.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number 10 for the sale of 1,112 Stark Street into committee.
Friend's the second on that one. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number 11. Calling for a public hearing on the sale of 623 South Street, sponsored by Aiello. Burmaster's the second. Thank you. Sum of $57,000. Again, October 19th, 7:00 PM. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number 12, 623 South Street into committee.
Second from DeBrango. Any opposed? It's in committee. All right. The next piece this evening is an ordinance rescinding Section 214341F of the Utica City Code of Ordinances. This is ordinance number 13.
Can we just make an amendment in that particular piece just to add in what the title of the section was?
Would you like to-
Just, what was it?
Frame that as a motion, please?
Yeah, just, 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 yeah, just stating that it's, we're changing it to 90 days.
All right. Mr. President, I'd like to motion to amend to insert issuance of certificate of use and condition certificates of use.
Second.
All right, thank you.
You got to recognize Williamson.
We got it. If people are using their voices, then we're good here. All right, so the amendment, any opposed to that amendment? Okay, the amendment is now made. The piece sits as is. Who was the second on moving that piece? No, that was for the amendment. That was for the amendment. All right, so we got Miole and DeBrango on moving the piece.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Next piece this evening is an ordinance for a transfer from the Board of E&amp;A. It's ordinance number 14. This is sponsored by minority and majority leaders, so can someone please move this?
Make a motion.
Yes. Thank you. And so be it ordained, the city controller, the city authorized, and directed to make the following transfer of funds. From A389930, restricted fund balance flood mitigation, sum of $125,000, to A57130-411, infrastructure contractual stormwater, $125,000. The explanation was to account for unexpected stormwater expenses. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Before I read this, I'd like to make a note that the title does need to be corrected with two Ps on the, on the title. Proposed ordinance number 15. Handicap parking sign required. Moved by Councilmember Burmaster. Is there a second? Miole's the second. Be it ordained that Section 216378 Schedule W, handicap parking locations of the city of Utica code be amended to include the following. Place one handicap parking sign on the Western Curb Line in front of 1572 Baxter Ave. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nineties. Nineties adopted.
I've got a thought up here. All right, that concludes what was in the packet, but there's also something that's been added. It was submitted to the council on 10/4/2022. Introductory to Local Law Number Five, 2022. Would someone like to move this? You move to introduce?
I would.
Handtable?
I'd like to make an amendment. First, I'd like to introduce this, and then I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay, so we're going to do a motion introduce. Is there a second? Aiello's the second on that. I'll read this really quickly, and then you can make the amendment.
Why don't you read it as amended?
Please.
Okay, so the, I'd just like the council to accept the fact that we've read this in pre-meeting conference.
Absolutely.
Okay, in its current form. Please make the amendment. Now, this has been seconded.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend it in the second sentence of the second air.
Oh, the OF.
Where it says, "The F should read OF." So members of the planning board are being asked for a question.
All right.
Members of the planning board.
Second from Miole. Any opposed to that typo being amended?
Anything usually gets a word in.
In its final form.
All right, so now this is, is there a motion to lay this on the table? Second from Miole.
You just got to make an amendment to fill in the dates.
Are you talking about above there?
Presented in red.
That's pill jacket material. Everything below the be it enacted is the actual-
So you're good? You don't have to make an amendment to fill in?
No, we're good. So I'm going to read this in its final form. Be it enacted by the common council for the city of Utica, New York, Section 3.007B is hereby amended to add paragraph in parenthesis 45, which shall read as follows. Section 3.007B 45. B, paragraph 45. Members of the common council shall have the right to speak at any meeting of the planning board and/or the scenic and historic commission on proposals in their district. The council member shall be allotted time to be determined by the members of the planning board and scenic and historic commission. The council member speaking does not represent the views of the common council, nor will the council member attempt to engage in debate with the members of the planning board or scenic and historic commission. Nothing herein shall be implied or affect the responsibility of the planning board and scenic and historic commission and its powers to solely determine the matter before, then, in the manner provided by law. The effective date, this local law shall take effect upon filing in the Office of New York State Secretary of State or as otherwise provided by law. Is anyone opposed to laying this on the table?
Nope.
It's on the table.
Make a motion, Senator.
Second.